Call. January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Planning Commission meeting to order at seven P M. And we'll have the roll call.
Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Ace McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay, election of officers. Oh, we already did that. Wait.
Going ahead to twenty twenty-five, are you?
I wasn't satisfied.
Quick year.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment due to a typographical error. In item six B, tiny homes discussion should be short-term rental discussion. I move to approve the agenda with that amendment.
You want to delay election of officers as long as you're doing it too?
Sure.
In item two?
Why not?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Minutes from the previous meeting of January tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve the minutes from previous meeting, January tenth, twenty twenty-four.
One second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public comment. Anyone here wishing to make any comment? Come forward, but since there's no one here, no one will be coming up. So we'll move to six A, new business. Market Township Master Plan Update, twenty twenty-four. Jason or Eric?
Yeah, so tonight, um, kind of a loose agenda, if you will, or an easy agenda. Hoping to keep it kind of to a work session almost, if you will, but I included the most recent copy of the master plan. And we will be updating that this year to comply with, um, the Planning Enabling Act. And you can see that there are introduction chapter, social and economic characteristics. That will be updated with twenty twenty census data, so that's new to us. The natural resources chapter, chapter three, a lot of that will not change because geology, topography, forest lands, wetlands, soils, those things remain pretty constant, although we should take a look at that. I think the last time we had a brief section on local food production, which we included. Chapter four is existing land use, so we'll take a look at that. Chapter five is community services. We can certainly update that. Chapter six is public participation, so we'll have a brief discussion on maybe how the Planning Commission wants to gain some public participation, whether we want to do, um, separate meetings for different areas of the community or do a community survey, as we did last time. And then the meat and potatoes of the master plan update will be, um, the goals and objectives and adjusting those to make sure that they're relevant to our needs. And then, of course, the future land use and zoning plan. Chapter nine is just the plan adoption process and distribution and adoption resolutions. So, um, you know, we've had a lot of activity over the last five years and we've had some challenges and some opportunities. And so really what I wanted to do tonight is just to start a conversation on maybe some of the broad brush ideas or concepts that you think would be relevant to include in the update. I know Eric and I have some ideas of our own, um, some of which has to do with climate adaptation, which is maybe briefly mentioned in the plan, but certainly the township's participating much more directly now in a consortium of groups, specifically Eric. And so there's room for some of that. I think the transportation issue is probably something that we can talk about as well. And that would be in community services section. And obviously, I think the housing issue is something that's new for this plan that we can adjust and adopt different policies for or at least identify some trends. So, um, with that, you know, if you've had a chance to review the draft or not the draft, but the existing plan, and you see some things that need to be updated, obviously, I'd like to reformat it. It'll look very similar to this, but maybe we'll just have a different color theme or things of that nature. But if the Planning Commission does want to do a survey, I think the county was pretty successful with their master plan survey, which was all done online, I believe. So that, I think, could be effective. And then if we do do a survey, what kind of questions, what kind of things do you want to ask the residents? I know that property maintenance has been something that has been something that's been expressed to us that it's important by either Planning Commission members or members of the community. And so if we're going to bolster that, I guess, section of our work, then, you know, how do we do that? Is there a more effective way? Just really broad brush, open to any kind of, if anybody wants to start off with any ideas that you want to see or have staff explore or research for this version of the Market Township Master Plan. So this would be, you know, basically our bible or roadmap to the future for the next five years with regard to land use. And Eric, do you have anything you want to add?
Not really at this point. If we do touch on the climate section or issue tonight, you know, as you all remember back in July, the township, I think the Planning Commission had sent it along to the board in December or prior to July. But in July, the board approved that climate resolution. So there's some stuff in there, I think, that would be appropriate to include in the master plan or expand the climate section that already exists in the master plan. So, and then in kind of hand in hand with that, the state and then the county, as well as N M U, have all committed to carbon neutrality by twenty fifty. And obviously, a master plan, we're not sticking hard, fast goals and objectives in there. They're a little bit more broad brush, but touching on that, I think, might be appropriate too. So just some thoughts of mine, but I'd be open to hear any of yours.
What's your, uh, what's your outline in terms of your planning to accomplish this? I mean, what kind of, what kind of timeline are you thinking so? I mean, like, I, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't come prepared tonight to really discuss this, but I.
That's okay, we're well, we know well what you would like to see in the plan or even by just the discussions that we've had over the last several years about what's important to the Planning Commissioner, each Planning Commissioner, actually. And, um, so, you know, we would take this typically a chapter or two at a time, come back with a draft, and you would review that, and we'd take a look at it, and if it's good to go, we'll put it on the shelf. We'll go to the next couple of chapters. But like, like I'm saying, like, I think chapter three, well, now that we're talking about climate, maybe that's something that will change, but a lot of that in chapter three, natural resources, things like geology, topography, forest lands, wetlands, soils and water resources will remain largely the same just because those things on a geological timeframe don't change very much. The FEMA floodplain declarations have been amended recently, so we'll make sure we want to update our, how we're approving plans and structures on, you know, anywhere in a floodplain along Lake Superior or anywhere along the basin, for that matter. So we'll probably include some of that in there as well. And that would, that would flow into natural resources, so I'll put there just a note for FEMA. And I would think even in the natural resources, we could probably include some of the climate initiatives that have been made by the governor with solar and wind. I think that would be important to at least touch on that. The fact that, you know, there are incentives for our residents and we can express in there that we've made some zoning changes, but I think housing is going to be a real big one. The twenty twenty census data, that really covers the entire, almost the entirety of chapter two, social and economic characteristics. Although I think employment is going to be an interesting one on page five. And then housing, of course, we'll want to adjust because we have an affordability issue right now.
So I mean, I guess my question was, do you want us to, you know, we're going to study this and come up with any things that strikes us that we might may be able to contribute? You want us to then send you an email, you and Eric, an email with our suggestions?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's take, um, let's take the first, uh, let's say before the next meeting, the first three chapters. That's thirteen pages. It's not a lot. And if you see things in there, and we'll, we'll take a look at it too, it's probably been a while since I actually read it. Maybe it's the last time we drafted it, but, um, I'm kidding. We do reference this from time to time when we get proposals, so. Yeah, and then we'll start plugging away on probably chapter two to start and just get that census data going so you guys can see the changes that were made from two thousand ten, decennial, to the two thousand twenty. You know, we grew in population, we're one of the few townships in the state to continue to grow. So we grew by six percent from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty. I'm sure the median income has went up. But employment and I'm sure employment's going to be, I'm sure employment's changed from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four quite a bit, so, yeah, those are things that we can take a look at. So we'll glean, we glean stuff from Lake Superior Community Partnership. They did a great job of keeping track of major employers in the area and unemployment rates and things like that at a local level. So that'd be helpful, but yeah, just be, I guess, and start thinking about this, get in that mindset that we're doing a master plan update. If you have, you know, residents that stop you in the grocery store or say, why can't we do this or that? You know, one of my major things that I'm going to try to get the board to adjust is instead of chasing some of these larger grant applications, you know, to acquire property, we, we do have property along the Well Road and down north and, well, it'd be, yeah, north and east of Lake Enchantment. And so, for instance, I attended a meeting in Humboldt Township Monday night, and they spend eighty thousand dollars a year on recreation. We spent about forty-five. Which I was surprised, so.
You ever consider like, uh?
Millage?
No, uh, 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 fund drives. Like that, that Well Road thing, you told me it was like a hundred and seventy thousand. That's all we, all it would take to do that. I was thinking, my God, maybe we could do some kind of a fundraising drive.
Yeah.
And get some big donors to, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand apiece, it wouldn't take too much, you know, and then individuals. I don't know, just an idea.
Yeah, no, potentially, and that could be something that we incorporate into the plan, saying that, you know, obviously, the township board is limited in what they can, especially by the big box situation. I mean, we've given back hundreds of thousands of dollars that could be, could have been used on roads or, you know, recreation projects. So, um, that's a good point, and yeah, that's something that we can add into the plan, indicating that we would like to start, you know, trying to fund these things at a local level. But I'm really going to try to get the board to make an adjustment to how they fund recreation because people really want pickleball courts right now, and they want disc golf and outdoor dog park and that kind of thing. And then I've heard lots of discussion from people, maybe more my age, who have kids now that are coming up. And I say that, and I'm turning fifty this year, so it's, I'm not that young anymore. But like an indoor practice complex, like the city of Nagani put in that very nice complex that they have. And, I mean, the kids that we're competing against downstate, you know, they play sports like all year long. And we're kind of limited in what we can do by not only lack of facilities, but the cost of renting those facilities. I know the ice at Northern at the Berry is like two twenty an hour for like men's league and stuff like that. So, yeah, it's expensive, and so I've heard, you know, inklings from other people that they would love to see something like that. And maybe that's a big project that we could, you know, promote and get some property somewhere to do something like that. Indoor soccer, driving range, pickleball. In fact, one of my good friends asked me about whether or not that, I think we approved, uh, it might have been internal, but we approved that trampoline park in the M C Sports location. And I guess that hasn't matured or, so they were saying, well, we could put twenty pickleball courts in there or more. But then in the summer, people wouldn't want to be outside, so. Yeah, just ideas like that, big ten thousand foot level, that's what's kind of the master plan is. It doesn't drill too much into the minutia. It really just lays out some goals and objectives and updates demographic information and then discusses where you'd like to see land use. I think we're still pretty well zoned. We still have acreage left for, lot left over for recreation, our residential, we have, you know, plenty to go for commercial. So I don't see a lot of change there.
Not that we're going to be copycats, but didn't Marquette, City Marquette just do a master plan?
Yeah, there's kind of coincides with ours, so.
We take, can we, is there something we can learn from that? So we could just, like, if there's some good ideas in that, we could just, you know, cut and paste?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'd like to tailor ours to our community. But I think everybody is in the same boat with regard to housing, and I think that's something we can work on. In fact, um, I applied for a fifty thousand dollar planning grant last week, at the end of last week. And if successful, it's through M I S T A. They would provide that money for us to perhaps bring in a consultant in to assist us with the housing component.
What's M I S T A?
Michigan State Housing Development Authority.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so they got some funding, millions of dollars actually, to provide communities with assistance. So I should hear back on that pretty quickly, and it's nice because the timing of that is very conducive with what we're working on.
Is this guy that just got the, the job, which was, I think they're paying him fifty thousand dollars a year or something like that?
Well, he's working on a grant, yeah, we met him yesterday. And yeah, he had some, some good ideas and wants to focus on a few townships that need assistance or cities. I think he's working with the city of Nagani because they rezoned part of Old Town there for development, so. Yeah, he was, uh, well-versed and is certainly a tool that we can use, as well as the brownfield. We've used that a couple of times now. And again, there is new legislation out there, if there's residential TIF districts that I know Longyear's exploring to try to come up with a potential brownfield plan that would perhaps allow enough funding to adjust the intersection through their incremental increase in value that they're going to place on their property. So we make sure that we want to, you know, I really see that housing, which is only one page apparently in our master plan now, but to see that really expand into something that's more consistent with what our needs are right now.
Didn't the state just announce like a billion dollars' worth of housing rehabilitation money for up to ten thousand homes in the state of Michigan? Did you see that? Is it, it's literally, I thought I heard it the other day, but there's a serious amount of money available for rehabilitation of homes throughout the state. And I figured, I thought they, they were going to try to rehabilitate ten thousand homes in the state. So basically, ten thousand dollars a home, a hundred thousand dollars a home, I don't know, it was an ungodly amount of money.
Yeah, well, if you find that again, send it along, we'll, we'll take a look at that too. And just make sure our residents are aware of those kind of things. Yesterday's meeting with Andrew and the gentleman from the housing department there, we also talked about Lost Creek and perhaps having a big renovation there because they need to update. And so, you know, what would that look like, you know, who would fund that?
What is Lost, I'm sorry?
Lost Creek is an assisted living, but it's state-funded.
Okay, yeah, yeah. There were some complaints in the newspaper, some residents were complaining recently.
About the condition?
About the conditions, yeah. The no garbage access and stuff like that.
Yeah, so modernizing, updating. So that's something that we'll take a look at kind of behind the scenes and see what we can come up with. But as an example, you know, some of those types of places need to be upkept or they're going to go away to become antiquated. And we don't, we don't want that, we want our elderly to have a place to go if that's where they need to go, so.
Do you foresee this process of the Planning Commission or the planning, master plan development, one that, uh, you're looking at accomplishing by?
The end of the year.
By interaction with us at regular meetings, or are you thinking of work sessions or what?
Uh, potentially both.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um, some of this we can do, you know, you'll just review it and be like, yeah, but some of it you're going to want additional input on. And I think that having charrettes or, um, you know, having some public input sessions really went well last time. We, you know, served some food and light beverages in the community room and just have people come in and have, excuse me, have some maps up and have some discussions on what people want to see. And I always, you know, say if, if you're abiding by or including things in your master plan and in your zoning ordinance that the people, the residents want, then you can really do no wrong as a representative of the community. So, yeah, it's a good way to tackle things. I know our road millage, um, is probably going to expire, let's see, two thousand fifteen for fifteen years, so not till twenty thirty, I guess, but, um, you know, are people satisfied with the road maintenance that's occurred? And then, you know, keeping a fairly flat tax rate, which the township has really done a good job of, I think. Those are usually the top two things, so now what are the next things? And I guarantee you, they're going to be, um, you know, recreation is going to be a big part of it. Different opportunities that people expect to see.
You know, in regards to the recreation, I, I remember, it was quite a few years ago now, but I was on the Lakeview Arena Advisory Committee for the city at the time, and they were talking about, um, kind of like an area millage for recreation where it was Chocolate Township, Market Township, the city. And they started out doing that, but then, I don't know if it just kind of fizzled out, but I didn't hear anything more about it after that.
Yeah, so I sat on that, I was the chair of that committee, actually. And what ended up happening is the city wanted to include things like the marina and cemeteries and anything that kind of tied into recreation, I guess, I don't know if it really ties into recreation. But if my, if my memory is correct, they wanted to lump in all of these other facilities that, you know, I think from the township's perspective, Chocolate and ourselves, we would be willing to share maintenance on ballfields or trails and, and assist with that. But to help pay for and maintain things that perhaps some of our residents didn't use, there was a rub there. We tried to get them to just do a trail authority as a low-hanging fruit because that was something that obviously, you know, the greater community desires and agrees on. But yeah, I think the townships ended up backing out of that. But I do have a copy of the final recommendations from the consultant that put that together. And, and trails were the main recommendation, but I think from the previous manager's perspective and perhaps even Supervisor Durant's perspective, we didn't want to go in with a millage that was paying for the upkeep of Lakeview Arena, the marinas and the like in the city. Things that were not as common as ballfields and trails. Common use. So that's a good, good point, you know, that was, that would be a recreational authority, which would be its own governing body, and they could, you know, a good example, that's the Iron Ore Heritage Rec Authority, where you have, you know, fifteen different municipalities contributing to that. And it's, obviously works very well in that, in that instance. They've done a fantastic job of not only creating the trail, but amenities, uh, trailheads, interpretive signage and history, I mean, there's a lot of, that goes into that trail.
And then you can tax, like the O'Hare, uh, I don't know, what, what do you call it? You're talking about Chicago, right?
Recreational Authority.
Oh, well.
No, the Iron Ore.
Oh, Iron Ore, I thought you said O'Hare. I was thinking, Chicago, they have, uh, their, I don't know what they call it, it's a recreational or development. I mean, tax on, you know, every time you get a coat, it's a ten cent tax for that. I mean, I don't know, is that the type thing you're thinking about, a taxing authority too?
It, yeah, if, if it's an authority and it goes through and it's approved by those municipalities, they have their own, it's almost like their own governing body. So they would have a, you know, a board of directors or what have you, and much like the Iron Ore Heritage Rec Authority.
Oh, okay.
Represented by the communities that they serve, basically.
Could you go up to two mills on it, if I remember right? It was maxed over two mills?
I think that's the D D A.
Right, I know it's the D D A, but I, I thought the.
But maybe it was, yeah. Yeah, without going to the vote, to the voters. Mm-hmm. So, yeah, that would generate quite a bit throughout those three communities or whoever else would be involved in it, but. It's a shame we don't have a water authority that's from here to Ishering, and everybody's tapping into Lake Superior water as opposed to everybody spending money on wells or exploration for additional water and antiquated water systems, so, you know, in the western part of Market County. So, yeah, I mean, our previous manager, Manager Gerard, he was a real big proponent of like authorities because you can take care of each other much more efficiently or take care of your constituents much more efficiently. But there's a political, um, game there too that's not easy to navigate sometimes. So, yeah, just wanted to introduce the document again, reintroduce the document to you. This is something by law that we have to update every five years, so we try to make it, um, they say a good plan now is better than a better plan later, so we're going to update it the best we can now. And, of course, it is amendable throughout its lifetime, throughout its relevant period, which is five years. I haven't ever had to update one. Usually the idea is that you are foreshadowing for five years. You know, you can look ten, twenty years out if you want in this document, but it's, it's relevant for five years with the state of Michigan, so. Yeah.
When we had the survey done last time, was, was that an online survey or was it a mail-in survey?
We mailed them out last time and had an online component.
Can we get a copy of the prior survey?
Yes.
Email us those?
Yep.
We'll have some idea of what kind of questions you're asking.
Yeah, because some may not be relevant now.
We could modify if you.
Did you say it was both mail-in and online?
I, I think so.
Okay, I kind of remember phones something on online, and I, I don't remember anything in the mail-in book.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take a look back, but Survey Monkey and these other entities that are out there are very easy to use and, and really only costs like a couple hundred dollars to run it for a month and a half or something like that. I would be interested to know, for instance, you know, would the, would the township be acceptable to higher density residential development? Would they be acceptable to accessory dwelling units and what that might entail? You know, what would be the yes-to-no vote on that? I'd be interested to hear that, so that would be one question that I would like to hear before we amend. I know I had, I came in kind of guns blazing, saying we should really make some adjustments to the zoning ordinance to allow for higher density and accessory dwelling units. But I think the proper thing to do would be to update the master plan first. Get an idea from our residents first on what they're acceptable of and then adjust the master, and then adjust the zoning ordinance to police the master plan, which is what you're supposed to do as a planner anyway. So.
Did you happen to see, I think it was just today on the news, where in Michigan, uh, one of the guys, one group that was opposed to the state regulating all of your, like, electrical and, you know, taking the power away from the townships, you know, with your, um, windmills and generators and all that, uh, they just. you know, with all your, um, windmills and generators and all that, uh, they just got approved to, uh, if they get, I think it was three hundred seventy-six thousand names, they're gonna actually put on the ballot in November.
Yep.
To vote who gets to control all that.
Yeah, I did see that. So that would, that's a pushback on the governor's initiative. Um, furthermore, I was told by the supervisor yesterday that there's a Axe the Tax Movement out there, which would, if successful, would basically eliminate property taxes in the state of Michigan, um, which means we wouldn't have to worry about any of this stuff. We, we, we would be looking for new careers.
What would happen instead of higher sales tax?
Um, I don't know. And then you hear, uh, former President Trump talking about, you know, his initiative to relieve, uh, payroll tax. So, yeah, I don't, not sure what's gonna happen. But those are some of the things that we're gonna have to contemplate, um, and, and stay on top of. The property tax thing would be a, a major blow to any local municipality and your ability to really do anything. I mean, we, we're based off property taxes. Your services are provided by property taxes, so. Um, yeah, if you thought the, uh, big store, big box issue was bad enough, this is a, a much worse situation potentially. But, so we'll get you the survey, and that would be good to jump on that, like, pretty early on, get the survey out there. 'Cause that way, by the time you get to your goals and objectives and future land use plan, you'd really have, um, your marching orders from the residents, basically, and what they'd like to see. And then we'll come back, let's say, maybe the second meeting in February, we'll have a draft of, uh, at least chapter one and chapter two, 'cause that's just implementing, uh, plugging in the twenty twenty census numbers. And then the one that will probably need some, and let's say by the end of chapter two, then we're maybe ready to put together a draft, uh, survey, okay? And then obviously, you know, the more information we can share between each other, the better. So if you see an article here that's relevant to us, share it, you know, send it to the group, um, and, or send it to me or Eric, and we can distribute it to the Planning Commission. Um, things that are relevant to this, this process. Sound good?
Good. Yeah, sound good to me?
So then, six B, uh, as corrected, um, I don't know, I had a brain fart on that one, but yeah, I didn't mean to put tiny homes, I meant short-term rentals. And so, we've talked about putting a cap on the number. We've talked about perhaps some, um, density or, um, proximity limitations. What's the number, Eric, that we're at now with approved?
Twenty-five, I think?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. And so I know right now there's only a couple that are being contemplated.
I don't think we have any outstanding right now.
I know there's a gentleman named Lars who used to work for, um, Lynn Swidley, who said he was going to apply before we did a cap.
Yeah, we've, yeah, there's been a few people who have said that. Um, but as of right now, there are no outstanding formal applications. Yeah, we've talked to people here and there about the rules and stuff like that, but there's no formal applications submitted that need to be done.
So I guess from the Planning Commission's perspective, you know, there's a number of ways to regulate them. And, you know, you could put a hard cap on the number of them. You can put a hard cap on the number of them and decide that they can't be any closer than X from each other, like the city does on a city block, platted area. Um, it's really up to you. But I guess, you know, we have heard some concerns from residents about them. And they have been available, I think, I think since two thousand eighteen, so twenty-six in six years really isn't that high of an, of, of a rate. And it would seem like, um, maybe most of the people that desired to get them done, got them done.
How many people, uh, that just ballpark in your experience, how many people live in Trowbridge Park in this one?
Fifty-two percent of thirty-nine oh five.
Okay, so that's, uh-
Two thousand one hundred or, yeah.
When, what, fifty-six percent?
Here, let me, uh, I'll calculate it out. About two thousand people. Two thousand homes. Or peo-
Two thousand homes or people?
People.
In Trowbridge Park?
Yes.
Yes.
More than half of our population lives in that one square mile area.
How many structures? I think that'd be more, you know, 'cause, you know, you could have a family of ten. So you have any idea how many structures are in, in Trowbridge Park?
Uh, we haven't, but we could-
I mean, that, that would give you a little more of a, a grasp on, you know, how many, how many structures we're dealing with. You know, personally, I, I, you know, I, I have mixed feelings about limiting what people can do with their property. However, I think that short-term rentals, like that can be detrimental to a community, to a neighbor of the people, that kinda stuff. You don't have that kind of a communal, kind of a atmosphere where you know everybody's kids are and you know where your neighbors are. 'Cause if you have short-term rental here and a short-term, pretty soon, I mean, there's no sense of community left anymore.
Well, almost-
And I think that's an important thing.
Maybe you add this to it.
And also, it, it prevents people from just being speculators, buying a home and renting it.
They're saying that.
They have no interest in the community whatsoever, other than to withdraw money out of it. So, you know, I, I can, I can see both ways, but, you know, I think that we, we may wanna look at, if the most are over in Trowbridge Park, maybe limiting them there. If there's, or on five fifty, that's enough out on, on that area out there. So, you know, I think that's something to take a look at. I don't know if we're anywhere near at capacity on how many rentals we should provide, or maybe we're, we're getting to the point where we're saying, you know, it's enough right now. And look, and review it again later, and look at it again later to see what, what it's like out there. But, you know, I think that drives up ho- home prices. I think just, you know, when people are speculating on homes for rentals, you can make serious cash on a home if you're renting it. I mean, you can, you know, your mortgage is, you can cover a mortgage easily if you're doing short-term rentals, especially at, you know, a couple hundred bucks a day, when, you know, versus a long-term rental where you can't get that kind of income off of it.
But how does that drive up the price of the home?
Because people are willing to pay more for a home, 'cause they know they'll get the return off it versus someone that wants to live there. Oh, yeah. I, I think that may be the case. I mean, you know, Bethany would have a better idea of, of, on the housing market, but I think that short-term rentals, you can get, you can get your maximum buck from short-term rentals, 'cause you can charge the most amount of money. It's like, you know, a hotel room for a hundred fifty bucks a night. I mean, that's, you know, I don't know what that'd be, forty-five hundred dollars a month rent? People aren't gonna pay that rent, but if you can make that kinda money on short-term rentals.
But doesn't that really depend on, like, I mean, so I could see that being the case if it was like where you have a lot of small homes packed into a small area like Trowbridge Park. But for other areas where the homes are more spread out, is that really a factor, do you think?
I don't know. I, I don't know. Jim would like, want a lot of short-term rentals up in Oak Hill Estates. Probably not, probably not, 'cause it's not a neighborhood anymore. All it is is just the commercial ventures out there. You know, so I, I, I think we'll have to look at it as far as, you know, are we responsive to people that are homeowners here, live here, wanna raise their kids here, versus people that just wanna make a buck? You know, and, and it's, it's a, it's a hard thing, 'cause we want people to make a buck too. You know, we don't wanna put that away, but I think there, there's a balance that we're gonna have to find sooner or later, 'cause it can't be the Wild West.
If we're really focused on housing affordability, I think your point is well taken, because I think it definitely does affect affordable housing.
Yeah, twenty-six homes off the market now, you know, since we started doing this.
Right.
And if you notice, almost half of them are in this last year that, that were applied for.
Yep.
Ten out of twenty-six, so that's-
Yeah.
It's gone from four to ten.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's going on an exponential curve up, you know, so I don't know. We may, may, it may plateau, but if it keeps climbing, I mean, we're gonna have to be proactive on something like that, so, you know. Just hold on a second. Do a moratorium. We're not gonna have any short-term rentals for six months till we can get a feel for what's going on.
Yeah. Well, why don't, um, so, before our next meeting, uh, Eric and I'll take a look at different ways different communities are not cracking down on them, but regulating them.
Yeah, which, which is a fair thing to do.
With communities that are more our size and maybe township-wise, um, I've heard that, um, Eagle Harbor has a really good short-term rental ordinance. Have you heard that too? So we'll take a look at theirs and see how they regulate it, and we'll give them a call or something if we have to. But we'll come back with a couple of options for you that are tangible.
Well, I mean, half of the short-term rentals are in Trow, Trowbridge Park. Thirteen out of twenty-six. So, I mean-
Which is consistent with the population, yeah.
And I will say, not to play devil's advocate, but, 'cause I'm certainly not trying to argue against you, Steve, 'cause I agree with you. Um, but a number of these, and I don't have an exact number, but a handful of them are people who have told us in their narrative or verbally over us at the phone or email that we are out of the area, we bought this house, we wanna move up there eventually, but we haven't retired yet, or something like that, so we're gonna rent it out for the next two, three, four years and then live in it full-time. So all of them, I would have-
Versus, and, you know, I'll, they could come up to you and say, you know, I'm just a real estate speculator, so I'm gonna try to make the maximum amount of money up here. So most people would be like, maybe, maybe I'm not gonna say that.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and a number of them too, I think, are people that live in the area, and this is their first home, they buy a upgraded home.
And, and I, and I can appreciate that too.
So, I mean, every situation, I think, is different.
Absolutely, but like, you know, we're just gonna have to get, maybe get a, a handle on it and how we want, you know, because I think there's been, there's been conversation about it, and I think people are becoming more and more cognizant about, hey, there's a lot of short-term rentals out there all of a sudden, 'cause it's a way, a way to make money.
Especially with that last one, um, Phil's area on five fifty, the public that came.
Yeah.
So I think, to your point, I think a proximity limit might be good, so no short-term rentals, no, you can't have one within five hundred feet of another or something like that, one thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable too.
That might be appropriate, especially for places like Trowbridge or five fifty, where we do have a high concentration of them.
And what about owners? I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Would you be able to put any conditions on these short-term rentals? Like, um, you have to live in the township in order to apply for a short-term rental? Or, um, can you limit the short-term rentals to a certain, uh, district, like rural residential or scenic residential? Will either of those be possible, or is that illegal to do?
I think the latter is probably more consistent with appropriate zoning. As far as a residency requirement in order to apply for a permit, that would be something that'd have to run by legal. But certainly, you could not allow them anymore in Trowbridge, in urban residential, because Trowbridge Park is the only urban residential district, the one square mile, section sixteen. And that's not discriminating against the rest of the community, because you're just saying, look, we, we do allow short-term rentals, we just don't allow them anymore in this particular, particular zoning district. We do allow them in other zoning districts. I think that's fair play.
Also, could you, would you, uh, I don't mean to pick on Phil five fifty, but, uh, they've got three short-term rentals.
On two pieces of property?
I know, but, so it's basically one ownership.
One per owner or something like that?
I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying, is that something that's doable or?
I, that is, in, like, the conference we were at, the planning conference in October, um, I do believe that is the way some communities do it, that you cannot, well, one, that they don't allow any LLC ownership, it needs to be an individual, and then two, that they can only operate or own and operate one or two or whatever number you put on it. So I do think that would stand. Obviously, that's something we'd want, wanna run by.
Yeah, because that would, that would, that would decrease speculative buying up of property and then-
'Cause then it just turns into like a lodge or like a small hotel that they're running. Yet they don't have any of the same restrictions, like with, um, like hotels have to go through, what am I trying to think of? Like for food, you know, and getting all the permits and everything. They have all these little short terms they're running as a business.
Well, what about this, uh, the one by the silo? Didn't we, I mean, they have, they've got fourteen cabins at their short-term rentals, right?
No, four. They went from six to four.
Six, uh, six to start out with, but now they're only gonna do four.
Oh, it was six, the, okay.
It was six.
Stay in place.
Okay.
Stay in place, yeah, which is a popular term. Uh, be thankful that we're not in the Sun Belt, um, because I watched a documentary, um, that there was a corporation that just owns a bunch of homes and they rent them back out. They don't even sell them back, they rent them out, because they're making that much money out of them. Like, ten thousand homes.
Right.
Owned by one LLC. So, yeah, it's a tricky topic, for sure. But, um, yeah, we'll drill into this and, and come back with some prospective recommendations.
And as far as these maps, I do apologize for not, for them not being in color, they kinda don't really serve a purpose when they're in black and white.
Yeah, our color printer-
Our color printer crapped out this afternoon as I, as I was trying to print these. So when it's back up, I will print them, there'll be copies in your mailbox, and I will also, at the next meeting, provide color.
You can, you can save the two cents on the township, 'cause I already printed mine.
Okay.
Is that that brand-new printer that crapped out?
It may be out of ink or something, I don't, toner, who knows? But, yeah, it was weird.
Like wasn't communicating with any computers, so.
Yeah. Um, but, yeah, you do have an updated list that Eric provided you with, and, you know, we're not being overrun with them, I think it's-
I think now's a good time to get a handle on it.
Yeah, you can definitely see in twenty-three, though, that they took off a little bit.
So Bethany and I were just having a little confusion here about the number of people we have in our township.
Uh, per the last census, I believe it was thirty-nine oh five.
Oh, okay, that's the figure then, huh?
Okay, so, um, fifty-two percent of thirty-nine oh five lives in the Trowbridge Park area. So, um, thirty-nine oh five times point five two is two thousand thirty point six.
Well, you know, when you're, when you're talking about housing, affordable housing and available housing.
Yeah, so there's one in church or one for every hundred people.
Of age groups are like myself and, you know, like there's nine, eight, and like almost twenty percent of the population.
One for every-
The top three people who are aging, top three groups that are aging.
Thirteen into twenty.
So after all, those people are gone, do we have excess housing then?
Right.
So it's, you know, it's kinda like back in the, in the fifties, when, you know, all of us started going to school, all the baby boomers, and they had to start building all these schools, or, you know, add on to all these schools, so they ended up closing all these schools.
Yeah, that's-
The population went down.
Well, and, yeah.
You kinda don't wanna do that here, you know.
And you're just in trouble.
Start building all these, you know, a whole bunch of condos and apartments and then have them be empty and, you know, in the future.
Yeah, the first of the baby boomers, I think, turn eighty this year.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'll be interesting, and that's something we wanna talk about.
Yeah, you kinda have to look in the future and, and look at the population trends.
Yes.
Especially right here and see where it's headed.
We're definitely aging, um, you know, who are the age cohorts that are trying to be here that aren't? And how big are their families, you know, that's-
All the younger people, so many younger people are moving out of the area.
That's not bad.
Michigan still suffers from the brain drain.
Yeah, yeah.
But he was saying that there isn't that many compared to-
Yeah, well, we'll, we're gonna do some research on that and figure out what's best for us.
Thirteen into ninety-three is, what, seven, six?
Per capita, it's a little-
Correspondence?
What's that?
Do you wanna move on to correspondence?
Okay, no one finished business, correspondence, draft, road committee meeting minutes?
Yep, so we started including, uh, draft meeting minutes for you guys again. Just remember that they're not approved until they go through the board's consent agenda, um, but largely they don't change, so it should be good to go. And, uh, not much for a township board report tonight. Um, I don't even know what they discussed at their last meeting, to be honest with you, so, um, the rec committee did not meet last month, and they will be meeting next month, though, so I will keep you up to date on that.
Road committee met earlier this month, and we elected officers and talked about meeting dates for this upcoming year. Chiefly eliminating some of those meeting dates. Bylaws call for six meetings minimum, we had been meeting twelve times a year, so. Some of them got pretty redundant, so that was our main topic of discussion.
And then planning and zoning report. Um, like I said, I applied for that grant that took a few days between just the update in our report from, um, last month or the end of last month. We have been having additional housing discussions, we've been talking with, um, the county on addressing two properties with regard to- We have been having additional housing discussions. We've been talking with, um, the county on addressing two properties with regard to property maintenance. That's ongoing. Um, we did send a letter out to, did you get the letter out to County Road five fifty certified? So that one, and then the next one will be to Mr., uh, the gentleman on Lake Enchantment, certified.
And the gist of the letter says what, if you don't mind?
Uh, that, well, waiting for one response from the county, but essentially that they're going to have to be taken down or repaired within a certain time.
Or?
Or they face, uh, the-
Rapha God?
Wouldn't go that far.
Long out of the law.
Circuit court, yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody to thump them.
Yeah. Uh, but yes, it's something that's, you know, not only that one, but the County Road five fifty, uh, property that I think would really help a lot of people out out there. And it, it would help, I, I think if we got that one cleaned up, you'd see a lot of other cleanup happening in that area. That's kind of what happens, keeping up with the Joneses and, you know, putting some new siding on a couple of those buildings out there. I don't know, but, um, it is a corridor for, on the gateway to some world-class recreation, and, uh, we should do our best to make sure that that's kept up and, and in appearance.
Let me ask a question. Has anybody ever thought about Mark Tran going up five fifty to some of those spots, like Sugarloaf? Has that ever been brought up?
I don't know. We can just certainly discuss that under the transportation section of the master plan update. Yeah, I think they're open. They got a new, they got new leadership now, and maybe, maybe that, did you have bike racks on the front of their, most of their, uh, buses?
The director, whoever, whatever his title is, but the head of Mark Tran's, it's on the DDA, so that's something, next meeting, I can broach with him.
Yeah, good question, or good, good suggestion. Keep some cars off the road.
Right.
Or allow more people to get out there.
That's right.
That don't have the mobility to-
Get the parking pressure off of it.
In regards to the planning and zoning report, uh, do you know anything, or have you heard anything about the mall closing? Because I've heard from a few different people that, well, AAA is moving, because the mall said they're not going to renew their lease, because they're closing the mall. And-
That was- Yeah, so some of those leases, I remember three or four years ago now, um, basically, the mall was offered to the township for a dollar. But we were not in the position to absorb existing leases and maintain employees and do all that. It's just not what local government does. So we kind of turned it down, and then this gentleman stepped in and bought it. So, um, if it does close, I think there's tremendous opportunity to redevelop that property. And I'm not sure what's going to happen with it, but there's been a lot of interest. I mean, there's lots, and we get-
I think just this, just this year, and within the last month, there have been two new applications for businesses in there that are taking over vacant space.
One's an arcade, and yeah, and one was-
And the other is a tanning salon.
Yeah.
So.
And that's what it was all about. In fact, if you read, you know, uh, quarterlies that we get, like, for planning, it was all about changing the land use of a mall from just retail into other uses, like restaurants or uh, office space, or-
Housing even.
Housing perhaps, yeah. Which is interesting with, uh, you know, the church going in on the backside of, you know, I don't know what's going to happen with it. That property's been separated off, so I guess they could demo this or that, but then you've got Dunham's there, which is standalone. Cole's is standalone, so I don't know, I'm sure how you would parse it off, but, um, I haven't heard that. I guess, um, something new to us, but it wouldn't necessarily surprise me in that they have definitely been in arrears, uh, on their water bill.
And power bill.
And, and power bill, yeah.
They don't, a lot of the kids can't go to work there because the power goes out. They turn the power out on them, so we have, we have kids working at the restaurant who said that. They get called up all the time and said, don't come in today, because they turned the power out again, and it won't be on till such-and-such a day.
Yeah. Not surprising.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, sorry, I don't have better information, but, uh, we'll, we'll start poking around and see what's going on. Uh, and then, yeah, the master plan update, obviously, that'll encompass quite a bit of time, um, throughout the year. And, yeah, there's been some conversations and people interested in doing some projects. Um, nothing noteworthy yet. But I think twenty-four is going to be another busy year for us, quite honestly. I, I, and I got a call from, uh, or an email from Mike Conter today, and he said that Texas Roadhouse is still on pace for the end of February. So we'll see how that goes too. And he said Panera Bread's still doing really well. And as far as I know, there haven't been any accidents out there, so.
What about the, uh, other property there that was going to be, there, somebody was looking at it, where Queen City Burger was at first, and, uh, that, uh, Chinese restaurant?
Yeah, so that's the, there was a, a broker that I spoke with for, uh, last week from Green Bay, who's potentially looking at that property. And I've heard the burger buses moving into where the former Queen City, the last-
Lakers Pizza and Burgers, or Lakers Burgers and Pizza, one or the other.
No quick trip yet anywhere?
Nothing, no, haven't heard anything on that.
And here or there?
No, and you wonder about, like, um, properties like Forty-One Lumber, and some of those older properties, how long they'll hang on, and how valuable those would be if they were redevelopment-ready. Not to speculate or take anything away from Forty-One Lumber, but you know that people are looking at that, those kind of properties, you know, what's it going to take? So... Yeah, I've been impressed, uh, the last couple of years with the, the quality of development that we've gotten. I think it's been a lot better than the previous years, that we've, we've seen some, uh, not marginal styles, but just less attractive, for sure. So, it's definitely ramped up. Thanks to our design standards. That's something else we can potentially look at as well. Focusing hopefully more on research and development, high-tech industry, but there's still room for more of that. Not that we're opposed to retail, um, entertainment, but I think we can assimilate those in there too.
Is, uh, higher love up and running in the old fish and wildlife?
Oh, yeah.
Are they?
Oh, yeah.
Any announcements? No public comments, since there's no public here. And additional comments by planning commissioners?
Uh, yeah, February eighth, Winter Carnival, Michigan Tech. That was a good time. Go up on Thursday. If you want to see the statue pristine, Thursday. By Saturday, they're a little more degraded, beer-covered, whatever else gets spewed upon them. But Thursday morning, it's a good time up there.
Did you have to get that image in my mind?
I'm telling you, I wanted to forewarn you. Don't go up there in the weekend. Go up there when they're nice and clean. I got a great story to tell you, real quick story. The winning, winning, uh, statues are always at a fraternity in Hancock. They do an outstanding job, like glass, windows, all kinds of stuff. And we were up there, it was a kind of a cool day, and a lot of people were there. And they have these little things right in front on the sidewalks, you know, printed out in colored letters, and then they have some kind of a, a printed-out thing. And I was taking some pictures of it, and I took a picture of the, uh, little thing. iPhone shuts down, okay? And iPhone, on the screen, it says, "It's too effing cold, iPhone is shutting down." And I turned to my wife and said, does iPhone swear? She says, no, I don't think so. Boys up in the fraternity, they had a barcode on there, shut that phone down, just like that.
Oh, neat.
Yeah.
That you caught with the camera.
Yeah, just as soon as it hit that, shut the phone down, and it swore, dude. It's too, too effing cold, I'm shutting down.
That's great.
Yeah. There's some high-powered, hard-powered brave work up there, boy.
Our future engineers.
Nothing better to do.
Damn huskies.
Yeah, I know.
Done?
Nope.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Bethany?
Nothing.
Uh, I just kind of wanted to bring up the ZVA real quick, just to-
Yeah.
Let everybody else know what's going on, you know. I, I don't know if they got all the same email that I did. I didn't look to see as far as, you know, what's going to happen, whether they-
No, I didn't say, send that to the planning commissioner, but basically, your decision was appealed by Doc Pesala. The zoning ordinance expressly states that an appellate does not have the right to appeal a decision on a planned unit development. And I believe that's what our recommendation is to the ZVA tomorrow. Our attorney, Roger Zaplo, will be present, and, um, I expect it to be a fairly short meeting. And Jim is not able to participate, because he-
I can participate.
Yeah.
I can vote.
You can't vote. Um, and then we have another, I guess, uh, Mr. Graves from Huron Woods spoke in opposition to the project, who also sits on the ZVA. So that's an interesting dynamic. But I believe that, you know, if we're going to administer the ordinance correctly, you know, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act says that you can appeal a ZVA unless the zoning ordinance specifically says that it does not have the right to do so. Ours does. Not only that, but there's a question on the timing of the appeal submittal versus when the decision was made. We believe that, that expired prior to the application.
It's a fifteen days, is that it?
Um, I believe it was thirty, actually.
Thirty?
Yeah. So, then there's the other arguments which were really hypothetical, um, in the complaint. So, yeah, I think we'll be okay.
So will that guy be able to vote on that, then?
Mr., uh, Brent, I mean?
The one that spoke against the project?
Um, I believe he will, yeah.
He'll be able to vote on it?
I believe so, yeah. There's no monetary benefits, you know, it's usually where the conflict of interest would lead, you know. Really, the only one I can think of is really if there's a financial gain of some kind.
And John Marks can't vote either?
John can, sir.
Oh, he can?
Yeah.
I thought if he was on the board, he couldn't.
I don't think that's accurate.
Okay. So then, there'll be four voting on it then, because there's five members?
Correct, yeah.
So four vote on it. So you're just voting?
And, and maybe you're, I mean, if you are right about Marks, I'd have to go back and re- review my email chain from Roger. But there would be at least three.
So if it's two to two, what, what's not passing then? So I mean, if it's two to two, then it, it doesn't, doesn't come back here, or does come back here, or?
Well, it shouldn't. Uh, the attorney provided two options, uh, for voting, and both of those options, I believe, resolve the issue from our perspective.
But what I, what I, I guess what I'm saying though, is if, if either of those don't pass, if it's two to two, for some reason, then it, what's not, what's not passing?
I'm not sure.
I mean, it's, it's kind of confusing to me.
It is to me too.
What, what is, what is, what is not passing, and what, if it, if it doesn't pass?
Great. Uh, well, Roger will be there tomorrow. And I suspect he's got that planned out, you know, whatever may happen or may not happen, but, um, I believe that, uh, it'll be somewhat of an unanimous, pretty unanimous vote. If you're reading the ordinance and you're a ZVA member, and you're there to review an appeal, and if you just look at the ordinance, it says expressly that you can't appeal the PUD.
All right. That's all I have, so meeting adjourned.
Thanks for keeping us an hour tonight.
Okay, we're four minutes over, so.
That's all right.
All right.